Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 7th meeting of the Webster-Central School District Board of Education. Would you please stand and join us in the reciting of our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on your godly and universal liberty and justice.
Board members, may we please have a motion to move out of executive session?
Can we make a motion?
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we've had a chance to look at our agenda. I do have some changes. We'd like to move Roman numeral four, letter A, three, our grant acceptance, up to Roman numeral three A. I'm unaware of any other changes. With that being said, can we accept the agenda with the amendments? Motion?
To move.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set. The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district, and the public comments section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect an individual's rights, and matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. With that being said, is there anyone present tonight who would like to address the Board? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to our liaisons, and we're gonna start with PTSA tonight, because I know Stacy wants to get to a concert.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody. It's good to see everybody again. Allison and I have been really busy this past month with some programming. The first thing is Mike DiTulio from the political, he's the Political Action Chair, I'm sure you guys all know him from the Teachers Association. He emailed Allison and I concerns about vaping, and so we are going to meet with him in the near future, and it's just, it's become a major concern for a lot of people, and they would like to possibly discuss a forum for parents, something co-sponsored by the WTA and the PTSA. Another thing was, we met with Amy Shield Jones from CCSI in November to learn more about mental health initiatives and to explore drug prevention programming options. We're kinda meeting with her, talking about some other programming and stuff, and things will be coming down the pike in a little while. We're kinda staying tuned on that. So, the next thing, Janine Sanger, she is going to be joining us tomorrow at our PTSA meeting to discuss the ins and outs of ACE, which is the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study. Let's see, a book has been brought to our attention called Raising Kids to Thrive, and it's something the PTSA Executive Committee is gonna look into starting to read, and it's gonna be, participation is gonna be optional, and it's just gonna be something for parents to possibly look into, maybe a book club format or something. We're just kind of beginning stages of this and seeing where it's gonna lead us, but we're excited about this. Let's see, Wen is offering a youth mental health first aid training on February 10th, and PTSA may be asked to help out with this, and we may be providing lunch as well. Let's see, we are gonna be doing a pre-screening of Screenagers. It's been shown at a couple of districts around here and stuff, so we're at the beginning stages of this, so we're gonna be doing a pre-screening of that, and there'll be more information coming out to that in the next couple of months. And lastly, I'm sure everyone knows how our sister school, School Seventeen, they do a lot of donations, Stry and Schrader and the Planks. They do, on December 18th, they take presents that people had donated and taken, and they do a pizza party, and for those of you that don't know, it's the poorest school district in the Rochester area, and it's actually ranked fifth in national, I think, throughout the entire nation, of being, unfortunately, very low economic reasoning. So we would like to see about how we can support them a little bit more throughout the year, and not just at Christmas time. We wanna see what, you know, maybe PTSA and what we can do to maybe partner with School Seventeen, and also, along with the Hope House here in Webster, what we can do once Christmas is over, what is needed for these students and the teachers to support them. And then lastly, the Webster-Central School District is partnering with the U of Department of Neuroscience on the brain development study for the nine-to-ten-year-old brain, and Dr. Fox and Dr. Friedman are coming to our January Central PTSA meeting to discuss this with all of our Board members. So we're very excited about that. So that's it. That sounds like a lot, though.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yes, thank you. I'm off to Schrader. Thank you. Take care.
Alright, let's have our student liaisons. Does Thomas or Schrader wanna go first?
I think Thomas will go first tonight. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Stace. Or Samantha.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the name tag for you.
No, that's alright. I'm looking at Stacy's.
And we just had, you know, Stacy up here, right? There you go. We've had an amazing first quarter, obviously, now we're already halfway through second quarter, which somehow still blows my mind that we're almost into 2018 as well, and as winter comes, so does the snow, and as the snow comes, all students hope that Mr. Gamina will bless us with another snow day in the near future, possibly.
Bite your tongue.
Thomas is very proud to announce that his 78 students received the designation of AP Scholar from the College Board. Students earned this recognition by scoring a three or higher on three or more AP exams. Thomas also had 37 students recognized as AP Scholars with honor for having an average score of 3.25 on four or more exams. Additionally, there were 61 students who were recognized as AP Scholars with distinction, and finally, there were 11 national AP Scholars from Thomas. These outstanding students received an average score of four on all AP exams taken, and scored a four or higher on eight or more exams. The average AP score between these 11 students was 4.59. These awards are a great depiction of how many students at Thomas challenged themselves by taking several AP courses. Last week, Music Nationals were held in Orlando, and two Webster students were invited to go. Thomas's Katie Lovell and Schrader's Kyle Mueller attended Nationals, and we're very proud to have such talented individuals in our community. Last week, Thomas, Titan, Luke Piazza, and his friend Alex were guests on Megyn Kelly's show. I'm sure most of you know of Luke's story and the impact that he has had on our schools and the community. Luke was diagnosed with testicular cancer just two months after his soccer teammate, Alex, was diagnosed with leukemia. Both of them went on to undergo treatment and chemotherapy together. Throughout those treatments, both of them looked onto each other for support. Both Luke and Alex have beat their cancers and even returned to face-off against one another in their senior year soccer seasons, which I personally think is an amazing story and something close to home, when we always see people on the internet or on TV who always do these things, but it's something close to home and close to our hearts that we get to see people persevere and get through it. And also, on the topic of sports as well, the fall season was a huge success. Not only did we have our field hockey team make it to the state semifinals, and our girls' swimming team go to states, but all fall teams were named scholar-athlete teams. This means that all teams had an average GPA above 90. Now, we're on to our winter season, where all the games have just begun. Our boys' basketball team will be participating in the Hall of Fame Showcase Tournament in Hilton over break, and the girls' team will be a part of the Hospital Holiday Classic Charity Event in Hilton. The Hospital Holiday Tournament will be raising money for upstate hospitals and cancer centers. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Natalie from Schrader, and so at Schrader, the sophomores are getting ready for their big Model UN project, where they have a whole day of speeches and debating as representatives from different countries. At our school Student Council is hosting a coat and glove drive this week for the Wilson Academy, and whichever grade brings in the most gets a breakfast the day before holiday break. Right now, we have received around 150 items, which is pretty impressive. There are a few themed days before break, including Hawaiian Holiday, Ugly Sweater Day, and Come Me Clothes Days. So on those days, people will just dress up and, like, will kind of have a little celebration.
We'll have, like, karaoke during lunches.
Is Mr. Gamina singing?
No.
There's also going to be a candy cane sale going on for a few weeks for the seniors and other classes to buy candy canes for their friends.
Our winter sports are off to a good start. Last week, we just hosted our Matt Marino Wrestling Tournament, which is a two-day tournament at Schrader. Our team went third out of 18 teams, which is pretty impressive, and the wrestling team actually just won a match against one of their top rivals, Victor, going 41 and 31. Our hockey team just won their home game a few nights ago, going six and four against Pittsburgh, and our girls' basketball team won against Sutherland on Saturday. Our international club hosted their annual dinner, where students bring dishes from, like, different nationalities, and we pass the dish. It's a lot of fun. This year, we had a lot of kids, actually. We had, like, 20 kids show up. Our link crew will be hosting a movie and hot chocolate night for our freshmen, and we'll be watching Elf, so hopefully we get a good turnout there, too.
And lastly, our freshmen are having a lock-in, which has never happened with a freshman before, but we're hopeful that it will be successful and become a tradition, and it's the first main freshman event, so we're hoping it will bond them together. And that's it for Schrader. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to the Board, I would recommend that you, if you can, attend the Model UN, but the date has been changed. It usually was held.
Well, some of us here used to run a lock-in. I know that very well.
Wendy, would you like to tell us about the Oak Tree?
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm here to talk about Oak Tree, and we're a little bit later starting this than we have been in previous years. Oak Tree is co-sponsored by the PTSA and the WTA to recognize teacher excellence, and the people that are recognized, everybody that's nominated, obviously, deserves to win this, but the people that are nominated feel that it's a high honor, and we're starting a little later than we have been in previous years. So I really wanted to come in last month, but things were not completely set up, because we had, the committee met for many hours during the summer, and reworked the whole nomination process to put it online, so it's Google compliant, so that is available. I have sent it out to all of the principals, asking them to put it in their newsletters. I have sent it out to the WTA, and they have it on their website, the PTSA has it on their website, and anybody that would like to nominate somebody, whether they're a faculty, a student, a parent of a student or a community member, can do so. If they have difficulty navigating the Google, they can contact me, and I will walk them through the process and teach them, and we're hoping for a good turnout, and we would like a lot of people nominated. The nominations will close at the end of January, so we're in a good place right now, because we have about six weeks, and then they will have another six weeks to get their documentation done, which they can also put up virtually. So we're hoping that this makes it easier, but for those people that are afraid, I will walk them through it. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Alright, we do have a change in our agenda, so we'll move right to that. Webster, through the efforts of the adaptive PE teacher Sarah Fuller, has received a grant from the Christopher and, did I say that wrong?
No.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, yep. Has received a grant from the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation, and the money will be used for rock climbing equipment and such, and obviously, I thought Brian was gonna speak to it, but Sarah's right here, so.
Okay.
She talked when the person that did all the work was right there.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the Board for approving the grant and for recognizing the grant. I know you guys give a lot on your agendas, and I really appreciate it. As was mentioned, this grant will provide the means to purchase rock climbing equipment, which will make our phys ed programs much more inclusive when it comes to the rock climbing unit, training for our staff, so that ensures that our students will climb safely and appropriately. And it's going to kickstart the Webster Adaptive Rock Climbing Club, which will be an after-school program that will involve students with and without special needs coming together and kind of learning to rock climb, overcoming a lot of different challenges, experiencing a challenging sport together that I think will strengthen their bodies, their minds, and just the way that they look at the world. Students will enhance their communication skills, their goal-setting abilities, their patience, their compassion, and some of our kiddos will see their community from a completely different perspective for the first time, a different viewpoint, if you will. So that's very exciting, and I'm very excited that the grant is, was received, and that we get to move forward with this project. I hope to continue to grant, right, for Webster to provide future programs like this, and that's really all I have, unless you have questions for me. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
And thank us, when you have done all that work, so thank you for all the effort you put into that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sarah also helps organize our unified basketball team. She's one of the co-coaches with Ms. Quinn over at Clem South, so Sarah's a wonderful advocate for all of our students, especially those with special needs.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Well, here comes the work part now, Bill. We need a motion to accept the grant.
I would be honored if we moved to accept this grant.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you very much, Sarah. Alright, we'll move on to our mindfulness report. Mindfulness is a hot topic these days, and it's getting more attention in the news as more studies come out showing the benefits of mindfulness. While it may sound to some like psychobabble, there really is some evidence that mindfulness can enhance just about every aspect of your life, and it doesn't take hours sitting around in a lotus position to get there. You can use other terms for mindfulness, such as awareness, attention, focus, presence, vigilance. Well, tonight, we are going to hear from a number of people on an update of our mindfulness program and how it is being used in schools. So Erica, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Actually, you're gonna start with me?
Oh, we're gonna start with Carmen. Boy, I don't know what's going on tonight.
So before Ms. Ebert and Ms. McDonald and Ms. Carter and Ms. Miller share with us their experiences with mindfulness, I wanted to talk about where we've been and how we got to this point. So, if we look at that first slide, Paul? Here we go. Now, can you go back to the title slide? Is that the first? There you go. Thank you. The phrase at the bottom of that slide, which was integrate mindfulness and its impact on student learning, individual effectiveness, and professional collaboration, that is actually part of the Board goals. And you'll see throughout the evening that they're gonna be tying in their stories with how they fit into our Board goals, not just the mindfulness goal, obviously, but also the other academic pieces as well. So, the learning targets, the second slide, the learning targets that they hope to accomplish, and which I'm sure they will, over the next about 15 minutes. So we're gonna talk about science. I get to do that part a little bit. We wanna recognize where mindfulness is being practiced within the district, and also understand, again, the links between mindfulness and all of our, all of our One Webster Board goals. So, how did we get here? And this is really about the, it's about science, and it's about stress, it's about anxiety, and it's about helping our students have tools in their toolbox for dealing with that stress and anxiety. From our Youth Risk Behavior Survey from two years ago, it was obvious that we, as well as any other district across the county and probably across the nation, our students have, their number-one health concern is anxiety, and it's anxiety and stress. So when we found that out, it was sort of like, okay, there's the data, but now what do we do with that data? And we had to respond to that. And one of the ways that we responded, and luckily, the Board saw the benefits of attempting to integrate mindfulness across our entire K-12 and our adults as well, because I would imagine if the number-one health concern among our adults is still, it's still stress and anxiety. And the other piece that was so surprising to me in one regard and not surprising in another, was that nearly 25% of our population are taking or on some kind of medication for depression, anxiety, stress, and mood stabilization. So 25%, and I have a feeling that that's actually underrepresented. I think that's a conservative number. So, my last two slides, and I could talk about this next slide, about the brain, for a long time, but I won't. I'll do it in 20 seconds. Yes, you're welcome. There are three main parts, but it was really important that the research that we were doing and the practices that we're bringing into the district were research-based, that they were based in science, because we didn't want it to be some lotus, you know, sitting cosmic hippie stuff, right? Because it wouldn't go very far. But absolutely, when you look at those three parts of the brain, the amygdala, the hippocampus, those are the two parts of the brain that are really involved in stress responses and fight, flight, or flee, and when you have a mindful practice, the reactions within the amygdala and hippocampus are subdued, and they actually reduce your stress. While the third part of the brain, which really is the one that really makes us human, it's the prefrontal cortex, it's where all of our executive functioning is, and really where our learning is occurring as well, when you have a mindfulness practice, that actually is enhanced, and you can actually see the neuroplasticity, the change of the brain, and the enhancement of that part of the brain. And it is, it's pretty cool, and I won't show you all the MRIs and stuff, but that's, one of these days, we should, though, and maybe our neuroscience guys from the U of R will be able to show us that. Last but not least, Erica came and did a presentation to the Board 10 months ago, and this was before we had our survey results, but we wanted to show you these survey results, our strategic survey results, that had to do with, are you aware of mindfulness? That is the light blue, and do you actually have a mindfulness practice, or are you aware of a mindfulness practice? But you can see that just within one year of our work with mindfulness, that at least the awareness is up around 80%. So 80% of all respondents said they were aware of mindfulness. They were aware of our practice, and many of them are actually trying to practice as well. So again, the practice might be a minute a day or a minute a week, but at least there is that awareness. So that was, again, that was within one year of Erica really taking this over. So, from this slide, before, again, we get to Ms. Ebert, we're gonna go right to Micah. And Micah is a junior at Thomas High School, and she is pretty amazing on the links in golf. She's a nationally-recognized and nationally-ranked golfer, a Section V champion, but even more than that, she's a pretty amazing young woman, and even better in the classroom. So we wanted to have Micah share with you her experiences with mindfulness and with her work with Ms. Ebert. Micah, thank you.
Thank you. Ever since I was younger, I've had a very hard time dealing with my anxiety and stress and anger, whether it was with school or with golf or other sports. And when I was in a bowling match, I wasn't bowling as well as I knew I could, and I walked over and I saw Mr. Gamina, and I said hi, and he told me about the mindfulness program and Mrs. Ebert, and how he thought it would really benefit me with my attitude and just going out there and just trying to calm my nerves and do as well as I possibly could. So I met with Mrs. Ebert, and I think we really hit it off, and so we worked throughout the year, even during my offseason, just so I could really be prepared for my upcoming season, and my freshman year, actually, I went to a playoff hole to win for counties, and my nerves took over, and my stress and my anxiety, and I ended up losing the playoff hole because of it. And this year, I was in the same situation again. I had to go into a playoff hole, and I practiced my breathing routine that Mrs. Ebert gave me, and I ended up birding the playoff hole to win counties. And it was, it was a really great feeling, and I'm out with her again before sectionals, and she gave me some guided meditation to do. And, like, I was in my car, and I was like, I should probably meditate before so I can just calm down and just get on with my pre-game routine, and I meditated for 15 minutes, and I calmed down before I went out, and I ended up winning sectionals by about six strokes, and it just, it really, really helped, and it hasn't just affected me with my golf, it's affected me in my schoolwork, because I'm very hard on myself when it comes to how well I perform in school and my grades. So I'm so grateful for this program, and I'm really thankful for Mrs. Ebert for really helping me through this.
Thank you.
So Micah took some time out of her schedule to her dad's birthday, and I was gonna let her scoot out, so I don't know if this is okay to do, but if you do have a question for her before she leaves, and I would also like to say, it's not just me and the work I'm doing, it's the dedication that you have to that, so I'm really proud of you with that, Micah.
You know, so, do you recognize her? Do you remember, a long time ago, we had an opening day? And there was a young student in elementary school who had difficulty speaking?
And Micah, she came back out?
To a standing ovation?
Wow, wow, wow. Thank Mr. Gamina for that one. He talked to me to actually have me come back out and finish my little spiel that I had, so thank you, Mr. Gamina.
I tried you, I think. He wasn't coaching you to breathe.
But I think that adds to the fact, if you knew that happened, how, you could see that happening on the golf course, that, you know?
Oh, yes. Oh, this is just wonderful.
Thanks, Micah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so I'm really honored to have not only Micah here, thanks again, Micah, but Katie Carter is here with us. She is in a fifth-grade ICT classroom at Clem South, and has been in the district for 10 years, and I'll let you take over.
She told me I have two minutes, which is tricky for teachers, because we really like to talk, so I tried to pare down what I was going to say. So I've been practicing yoga about three to four years, so I feel like in yoga speak, that's relatively new, right? So, last year, I was invited to go to a symposium about yoga in the classroom, and so I was able to bring back a couple of techniques to my kindergarteners, where I was teaching at that time. One of the things they taught us were flower petal breaths. So we would breathe in through our nose, open your flower petals, breathe out through your mouth, close your flowers. So we would work on flower petal breathing, and it was really neat, because I think in kindergarten, and Laurie will speak a little bit more to that, you can see mindfulness happening in action. You know, I would make eye contact with a little boy who was about to knock over all the blocks for somebody else, and I'd just go, and we would breathe together. And then, you know, this situation would diffuse, and off we'd go to the next activity. But in fifth grade, so it worked, it was really helpful, and every day, we would start with a breathing routine, and so I've brought that to my fifth-grade classroom, and being in the ICT classroom, we have a range of backgrounds, right? So we take about five to 10 minutes at the beginning of each day, I put on peaceful music, and we breathe, and we om, and we set an intention for the day, and we start that way every day, and we've found that we want even a second time that we come back to that, so we do that again after lunch to settle again into our afternoon. And we found that, you know, anecdotally, it's really helping, and it helps me, too, honestly, you know, the day gets going, and we get excited, and off to the next thing, and just to take a moment and breathe, it calms us down and gets us focused and centered again. So I did poll my class, I gave a little survey to say, is mindfulness helping you? Because in kindergarten, I can see it helping, and in fifth grade, it's more intrinsic, you know, it's happening internally. So I asked the kids to tell me about a time they used mindfulness and whether or not it helped, and so one of the girls said, "One school day, the school bus ride was very, very angering. When I got to class, I remembered that we had mindful meeting, and I knew that it would help me feel calmer, so I told my teacher, the person reading this right now, how grateful I was for mindfulness." Just as, oh, and she said, "Please read this out loud to the school board." Just as a side note, I think mindfulness should be promoted in the district. Just as a side note, I think mindfulness should be promoted in the district. So I thought that that was a resounding affirmation of what we're doing. And then another little guy who's, you know, at a different end of our learning said, when I got hurt, I tried to do mindful breathing because it hurt so much. So I feel like for everyone, you know, we're starting to do this. And much as it's, we're guiding them, we're reminding them, let's breathe, let's focus, let's center. I think, you know, we're doing this every day. It's part of routine every day. So hopefully, it will become something that they choose to do and that is part of their lifestyle. So, but I believe it and I enjoy it.
Thank you so much.
Did I say to the two minutes?
You did a very nice job. Your time management skills.
Really worth your time.
And then Laurie Miller is here with us from Clem South, 13 years in the district and has this fantastic kindergarten classroom that I have so much fun in.
Yes, I do. We have a lot of fun. So I teach kindergarten, best job in the world. I know Carm's always saying he has the best job, but I do. So we have a ton of fun. I'm kindergarten teacher, so my first thought was like, oh, well, I need to read them a book. But then I said, this will take me more than two to three minutes. So I'll skip it, but this is a great book if anyone's looking for something to read tonight. So when I was thinking about mindfulness instruction in the kindergarten classroom and the impact that it has on my students, I first was thinking of the formal practice that we have. And similar to Katie, we have a part of mindfulness instruction every morning during our morning meeting and after lunch. Lunch is a very, can be a very stressful time when there are a lot of children in the And Erica comes in once a week this year. She's been working with our class and doing specific lessons. And Erica is also on a creative collaboration with the kindergarten teachers at Clem South where we're working on activities, lessons, books that link mindfulness with the essential skills. So those are some of the formal things that are happening in our kindergarten classrooms. And the mindfulness instruction focuses on a lot of awareness, body awareness, emotional awareness, and intellectual cognitive awareness. So students are thinking about sensations that their bodies feeling, is my mind drifting away and how can I bring it back? And am I feeling angry? Am I feeling comfortable and feeling uncomfortable? So a lot of the instruction focuses on those three areas and really identifying sensations and a lot of expanding vocabulary so that our youngest students have the language to talk about what they're feeling and use that to help them move through difficult situations and using breath and exercise to really, once they've identified what they're feeling and what they might need, using breath and exercise to work through those situations. And so those are all the teacher-led instruction around this. But the real impact I see is when I see five-year-olds independently identifying how they're feeling and saying, I really think I need to do some rainbow breaths, or walking down the hall and saying, I need to find my anchor spot, just coming out of the cafeteria, I'm feeling a little bit overwhelmed. So really, the application and the way the students are internalizing the skills and the learning about mindfulness and helping themselves to work through challenging situations.
Thank you so much. So that really speaks to the self-management, right? It's so tied so much to that essential skill, absolutely. I just want to catch you up here with what's been going on in mindfulness since last I was here. Just been continuing work with athletes and with about 20 teams, so across both of the high schools, about 20 teams. We're talking about a mindfulness lab and mindfulness club discussion at the implementation at the high school level. And the club idea came from, organically, from some students who are just really interested in doing a little bit more with mindfulness. So we're pretty excited about that. I would say that there's approximately, although it's a little bit challenging to wade through my calendar sometimes, but approximately 30 new elementary teachers have begun weekly work with me on this. And now I've started the exploration with UPK, so with four-year-olds. Yeah, that's amazing. Laurie, that might be the best job in the world. Also, what's, one of the things I'm really proud about is that this is not just about me. It's building some sustainability throughout classrooms. And the work is beyond that. So this is just from a Spanish teacher, done mindful minutes as brain breaks and mindful visualization to help students center and focus before a test. And there's also this integration of mindfulness with their curriculum. So working in Spanish, meditating on the verb to be. And so talking about not only verb conjugation, which is so exciting, you might need to use your mind to calm down after that, but really aligning those two things, academics with our mindfulness. In the 12-on-1 classrooms, the students are using this as a form of just self-management, the one to two, one to three minutes of breathing. Some of the music classrooms have mindful Mondays. And then, I love this, that we have older students in the elementary buildings teaching students as young as kindergarten how to do their breathing as well. So this piece for me is really where it's heading, is one of the things I'm, again, really the proudest of, that attachment to our goals, looking really at the goal one and to the goal one for academic. Mindfulness is a strategy to build resilience in academic settings. So Kate Hesler and I are creating some professional learnings for teachers on how to use mindfulness strategies to build resilience when you're working through complex texts. So it's not just a stepping in, doing our petal breathing, although amazing, but it's also this opportunity to say, on the spot, how can we use this to support our academics as well? We are looking into a kindness curriculum at UPK and I'm really excited about the exploration with Hata Basamo. I am seeking a certification in something called mindfulness-based stress reduction. It is, first started in the early 70s, I only remember because that's when I was born. And it is something that started in a medical setting. Sorry, Bill. It started in a, do you want some petal breathing? It started in the, in the medical field. And what it really is, is this fairly intense training where it offers an eight-week course to help people learn the fundamentals of mindfulness and be able to access that, just like our students will. So I hope to be able to offer that for our staff as soon as that certification is done. It does require four silent retreats for up to five to 10 days of silence. So we can talk about that at a later date if you're interested.
Actually, you can.
I can't talk about it. Perfect. And then we have staff wellness opportunities. So Rob DeRose and I, who is, he's just a TOSA and instructional specialist, are developing opportunities for teachers to explore mindfulness as well as other relaxation strategies. It's not just stuck to mindfulness, but anything that really supports the mental health of our colleagues. So that's the staff wellness opportunities as well. And that's what we have right now. Any questions for us?
Erica, this is kind of a top thought, but do you have a long-range goal that if we have enough people well-trained in mindfulness, that maybe the statistics of children, teenagers going on medication for anxiety would decrease? I mean, is that realistic to even think that?
I don't know that I've attached it directly to something that specific. But when you do say, other staff members, that piece speaks to me. Having this, again, it's not just me doing the work, that there's that opportunity for staff members to not only learn with their students through me, but take this on and teach their colleagues that. So I think that with that trajectory of learning, that, I don't know, I don't know Dan, that I can attach it directly to a reduction of that, but I would hope that that skill starts to soften the need for it.
Any comments, Bill?
No, I don't have any comments. I'm blown away. Just, is most of the energy being focused with our elementary children now? And then, do you see as these children start to age up and they take those skills with them, that then you have to broaden the secondary knowledge of the program? Or are you balancing secondary and elementary already with the teachers?
So I am heavily in the, in the elementary buildings. However, my day is spent across the district. So I am in the middle school and high schools as well. I would say, because it's in its infancy stage really, what I do project happening is that, that learning will grow up because the kids will come up with so much knowledge of those skills as well. But the trainings that I've been doing, so like at the end of last school year, we did a training about a mindful classroom, integrating our essential skills and classroom management and academic strategies. And there were over 40 of our educators there with us. And that was a cross-section of middle school, high school, and elementary. So I don't think that it's limited to the elementary buildings. It's heavily there, for sure. My work with the athletes, though, is also pushing that so much in the high schools. And so a lot of times, the students will say, hey, can we have Ms. Ebert come into our classroom? So I think it's fairly even, but it does seem to me in my schedule that I am heavily in the elementary buildings.
Some of your initial work was with athletes, right?
Yes, yes.
Anybody else in the county doing anything like this?
Well, no. No other district has committed the resources that you guys have committed. I know pretty soon, she's going to be getting offers from, you know, there's like four other districts that have reached out to Erica and she's gone outside of our school day and been able to hold trainings for other districts and for Bozies One, for Bozies Two. So they, you know, they know how, they know how well it's working here. Because, and I don't have to tell them, I think they're hearing it from certainly our coaches. And it's, the athlete part is really powerful because they tend to really talk to other teams and travel teams and such. But, you know, we are, yeah, we're pretty much out there.
I can tell you from the Monroe County School Board Association, I'm being asked all the time about our program. All the time.
I would imagine to see people who compete with Micah are going to start thinking, I need that.
I should learn how to caddy soon, Jan.
As a matter of fact, now that I remember it, Fairport is trying to do something with this, well, whatever Webster does, Fairport's going to.
The other piece too is, and Carm brought this up, I am leading a training at Bozies One with, there's about 30 teachers from across districts who are training to do what I'm doing. And so what I love about that is that the work that we've done has become really a catalyst for this work across all of the other districts. So I'm not leaving, don't worry.
One of the things that, again, when we face that data, around 25% of our kids are on some type of medication for anxiety, stress, or depression. And knowing that, you know, just knowing what our jobs and what our days are like, you know, in order for us, in order for me to go out and ask teachers to stretch out of their comfort zone and invite Eric in and to look at mindfulness as a tool for their students, you know, Erica had said to me at one point and to Brian Enin and Dave Swinson and Brian Freeman and to Shelley, it's like, guys, you have to at least try this. You have to become mindful at some point, even if it's for a minute a day. And so this summer, at our retreat, we committed to starting every one of our meetings, we meet twice a week, every one of our meetings with a, we started off with one minute and now I think we're up to five or 10, but five or 10 minutes of meditation and mindfulness and contemplation. And, you know, it works. There is no doubt in my mind that it works. My daughters look at me and they're like, how come you don't yell anymore? And so, and again, it's just, it's amazing. And I never would have thought that I could do it because I have all the excuses. You know, everyone knows my personality type and they're like, there's no way you can sit still for that long. But it's pretty amazing. It's very powerful. So, but thank you. I'm sorry, the board may still have questions, but you guys are, just thank you so much for taking the time.
Linda, anything from?
Just thank you. In this world of such stress and depression and anxiety, to give the students in our district something that they can grab onto, I'm sure it'll be more prevalent, especially with the kindergarten classes, because when we started full-day kindergarten, this wasn't a part of our day. And so I'm sure as time goes on and we continue to teach it, we'll see huge grounds there as well. And I thank you, and all of you for reaching out to do it.
Well, thank you because I don't obviously know that we could do this without this much support. And the vision itself, right, is so supportive of this. So thank you.
Sue?
I was just mentioning to Linda, it's kind of like Lamaze. But to a different level, you know, the next level. But, you know, that was kind of like the beginning of it, for me, anyway. It's good stuff.
I think we need to teach or educate our parents on this as well and open it up more and more to that as well.
But that was in our survey, wasn't it? Yeah.
And I think Erica will be going to PTSA.
Yes, no.
But we do hear it at Central PTSA, how the, how the parents are hearing what's happening in school and the kids are.
And they're so curious in how to support it at home. So it'll be great when it comes full circle as well.
And I will do applaud for the continued education. Erica is part of our series of guest speakers that is open.
Yeah.
To bring it further to the community.
And we've also created instructional videos to put out. They'll be out, and they've been on social media a little bit as well, just introducing parents and families and the community to what we're doing. They're all with students and, yeah.
Tammy?
This is tremendous work. And when we look at how stressed our kids are and read about it in survey results, what I like best about this is it's portable and it's internalized and it becomes part of their toolkit, handling their own life. So that I see as the main, the main power, it's a gift. They're giving a gift to themselves. So it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, board, we heard about rock climbing and I said, boy, wouldn't it be great for the board to go rock climbing? And I'm thinking, hey, hey, board, why don't we go into a classroom and do some mindfulness stuff?
The executive section.
That would be, we have a timeframe, board.
We'd have to start at 4:30.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Can we have a motion to accept this report, please?
Go ahead, Jan.
All right, in a second there. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye, sorry.
I gotta come in to read.
I've got a book for you.
Opposed to that motion? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I've messed up so much today, I'm wondering who's going to give the superintendent's report.
During last month's regular board meeting, the board had asked me to design a process and gather feedback around exploring later school start times for our secondary students, both middle and high school, and whether that would be necessary and possible for our district. I've asked Larry Wall, our district's coordinator of strategic initiatives, to lead this group's work. And Larry is off and running. The first meeting of the district's newly formed start time study group is set for Tuesday, January 9th from 4:00 to 5:30. And please note that this meeting will now be held at the Spry Middle School Auditorium due to the large number of RSVPs so far. So we had it set for the arboretum and we just, within three hours, we had too many people. So we're probably looking at close to 100 people that have already signed up. So we're excited. So during this meeting on January 9th, we'll hear more about the science behind teen sleep patterns from a University of Rochester researcher and also a local pediatrician. And some of our district administrators will be there as well. And it's important that you RSVP to Mr. Wall for this initial meeting by emailing him at larry underscore wall at webster csd.org. Mr. Wall tells me that, okay, he has already received 75 responses to an email that I had sent out earlier in the week, and I actually think that's now close to 95. This definitely seems to be an issue that people are interested in learning about together and stay tuned for updates on this group's progress. Mr. Kent, I'm sure you can have some stories about teaching first block versus teaching fifth block or sixth block.
I was much better fifth block than I was first block.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So are our kids. All right, my next item is also is of importance and it involves an early dismissal, the early dismissal date for our students K-12. Our district will conduct its annual emergency preparedness early release drill on Friday, December 22nd. That's the day before break. We are required to do this every year in order to test our district-wide plan for early dismissal of students. And please visit our website, New Story, to find out your child's adjusted early release time for that Friday only. And usually, the early release time is approximately 10 minutes earlier, right? 10 to 15 minutes earlier. So. Next, I'd like to offer my personal congratulations to a large group of our One Webster High School Computer Science students who recently participated in the Bebras Computing Challenge. Oh, it's like zebras. Oh, it's like zebras, but with a B, so Bebras, yeah, there we go. The November Challenge is a worldwide event. Um, it's, uh, students from more than thirty countries have to answer fifteen multiple-choice questions in forty-five minutes that focus on computation, computational and logical thinking. So forty-seven Thomas students and fifty Schrader students participated, with many achieving best-of-school and honor roll status. A full list of honorees can be found on our website, and I'm thankful to the district's programming club advisors, Mr. Jamie Fagan, and also Ms. Sage Miller, for encouraging these kids enthusiasm and excellence in the competition. And Ms. Miller, just a few hours ago, organized the Hour of Code, um, over at Schrader, and I happened to be there, it was from three to four, um, and it was amazing. It was very similar to what Mr. Gorski sort of led us through, um, a little bit more sophisticated for the high school students, um, but it was, it was really neat. And again, Mrs. Miller took that upon herself to, um, to organize, so I thank her for that. Um, and then lastly, I wanna wish all of you in our One Webster District a happy holiday and enjoyable and restful winter recess spent with family and friends. Enjoy the week of December twenty-fifth through January first. Um, we have off during that time, and we will see everyone back for a new year on Tuesday, January second. All of us in the district continue to be grateful for our eight thousand four hundred and fourteen students in our schools, in our eleven schools, and the joy that they bring to us throughout the year. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Karen.
So it sounds like our attendance has gone up since September, right?
Uh, yeah, I think we're eighty-four twelve.
Yeah.
Mr. Freeman?
I thought it was eighty-four.
It's eighty-four twelve. The last number I saw was eighty-four twelve, so.
But since you're speaking about attendance, have we, uh, had any influx of students from Puerto Rico?
Uh, we have had a few family, we've had a few families displaced from the hurricane, we have had three families, um, her- displaced from the hurricane in, in Puerto Rico, and they are now, they're now part of our district. So it's great to have them.
Just wondering.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to board business. You have in front of you the single audit report. Uh, this report is looking at our compliance, participation in the federal government's. My reading of it indicates that we basically are compliant with all the requirements. Is that true, Brian?
Correct. Uh, what you see on page four is actually a very good sum- summation of all the federal grant programs we have, uh, the IDEA grant, the six-eleven, six-nineteen, the total one and two, or, you know, you could see how much, uh, money we get from those grants. And also, on the bottom, you see how much support for the school lunch program that the federal government, uh, with commodities and reimbursements for participating in that program. You, but on page six is the real important part, very last line, it's a perfectly clean audit. Um, everything that we do, uh, with our grants, spending and operations is, is, you know, perfect.
So, can you just let them know about the, um, comptroller's audit that we're now gonna...
Did I have to read tonight?
So, yes, on Monday, we did, uh, receive our official notification that the New York State Comptroller will be joining us shortly this year for a, a full audit. Uh, we'll have a kickoff meeting, um, neck, a week from Monday, um, with their audit team, and we're gonna go from there. Uh, could be anywhere from one year to eighteen months.
Yeah. They come in once a week, about, approximately, once a week? And then you focus on one particular thing, which we don't know about?
Each, each week a different focus system, sort of.
So the, the initial part will be a wide-ranging net, look at something over here, some things over here, some things over here, and then generally from there, they'll kinda focus in onto one particular area, whether it's, uh, our reserves, finances, payroll processing, um, an HR thing. Um, we, the last time they were here, they did a technology audit, as far as, you know, user rights and safety and security. So I imagine they're not gonna do that again, uh, and they'll focus something more on a, a financial process, uh, perhaps, maybe how we, um, apply for state aid, making sure we're doing that appropriately.
How often do these audits happen?
About once every five years.
And if they use the formula they did last time they were here, they will probably invite the board in to talk with them.
Yep. So once they have a draft report, they'll come back and, um, the senior examiner will share it with the, with the entire Board of Education.
How much of your time, your staff's time is lost in hand-holding, or are they, once they're in the door, is it...
We already have a list of things they would like to see, so...
So you're just accumulating that data?
We'll accumulate that, and then it'll, it's a, it's a back-and-forth, now we wanna see this. Um, you know, some weeks will be very heavy. We might go three, four weeks where they're not here, um, 'cause they've taken all that stuff and brought it back to their office, then they come back, so it really ranges.
Okay.
Do they want everything hard copy, or do they do it like...
To be determined.
Okay.
Probably hard copy.
And so are they doing other districts in the area while they're here, or not necessarily?
Um, I have asked if they're gonna, if they're doing any of our local districts, and I've not heard back from all of them yet.
I've asked also the board presidents.
Because if it's once a week, they gotta be somewhere else.
They just finished audits at Fairport and Penfield within the last year.
And Sashan Aditya before that, and Kendall, who's just, they just finished Kendall as well, so, um, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it is what it is. And they'll, they'll find something, they, that is their goal, they just find something.
Okay.
It's okay?
It's okay, yeah. I just have a, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. Did I read that Ray Wager's business was purchased by...
He's combining. Yep, with another accounting firm.
He's combining with another accounting firm. Okay. Is that gonna have any impact on us?
Should not have any impact whatsoever.
But just because we...
Just to be a different name. Maybe the binding will change a little bit on our reports, but it should have no impact on us.
When was the last time we went out to bid on that?
Last year.
Did we, was it last year?
We did the RFP last year.
So, but since he's changing his company, would you do that again, or no?
I don't think so, uh, 'cause we're locked in with the pricing, and where we're at, comfortable, we're still have the same audit teams, he's still part of it, um, so...
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree, we're fairly comfortable with Ray.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I've always been very happy with him.
He's extremely helpful with any issues that pop up, many of his audit team and his staff.
He seems to get good advice.
To many districts in our area, yeah. Let people just...
All right, may we have a motion, please, for the single audit report?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, it appears as if the Internal Revenue Service has increased the limit on flexible spending accounts, so therefore we need to amend our contract with our employees. Uh, I have that correct, Brian?
Sure, we, uh, we have a plan, we're, uh, with Benefit Resource that oversees all of our flexible spending accounts for us, the maintenance and the management and the, um, all the rules and regulations that go with it. Um, so, we are adopting the increase, and so to adopt the IRS increase that's allowable under the flexible spending, we have to amend our plans to show that. So this is just a resolution that the district is amending their plans to facilitate that increase, so our employees can, uh, take advantage of it.
And I believe it's fifty-dollar increase?
Fifty-dollar increase, from twenty-six hundred to twenty-six fifty.
Any questions from the board? Then may we have a motion to accept this resolution, please? Actually, there's two.
Yep.
We'll do them together.
Oh, go ahead.
So moved.
In seconds.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I believe we have an extracurricular account that was at Schrader that was used for their musical.
Correct.
And it's being recommended that we, uh, close that account and transfer it over to a five-oh-one C.
Correct, they started a boosters program, um, solely for that, so we are going to close the extra class account and shift the funds over to their new boosters program.
'Cause it really is not the job of students to fundraise.
Yeah, music and the sports thing's really tend more to a, a boosters-type program rather than an extra class. It's not a, it's not a club, um, per se, that meets once a week and has, has a charter. Um, it's, it's more of a boosters-type activity.
Any questions from the board?
What is this money used for? Like...
The musical.
Renting the backdrops and stuff like that?
Yeah, all, various things.
Copyright.
Yep.
It actually had to be scripts, and that costs money.
It's expensive to put on a musical.
Especially a Disney one.
Yeah. It is.
Schrader should be...
It'd be good. They're always good.
All right, may we have a motion, please, to, uh, close out the account and move it to the five-oh-one C booster organization?
So moved.
Thank you, and we see a second from Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Sue, we have a number of policies, and I'll let you deal with these.
Yes, yeah, we have four policies here, first reads. Um, you can vote on them all at once if you want, or we can do them individually, it doesn't matter. The first one is nomination and election of board members. We just wanted to change this policy, now that we've changed our voting machines, we wanted to update the policy and just make it a little bit clearer for people. No, no change in, in what we do, or any of our procedures or anything, just, just make it a little cleaner. You wanna go on, or do you wanna vote?
Go on.
Okay. The second one is formation of district committees. You'll see in red, the only change we made was, um, instead of looking at the quality schools rubrics, we wanna make sure that, um, our committees are looking at our, not only our mission and our vision, but our core beliefs, essential skills, and the support or strategic planning process. Just a little bit of a clarification there.
So the question is, is the start time fitting in with this?
It's fitting in under strategic planning, as we put it.
But we're still gonna be looking at all the mission and vision that has to tie in?
They should be.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. And the next one, English lang- English, English language learners.
Yeah.
So, it, we're just using different language now, so we've had to alter the policy to reflect that. So there's a lot of nomenclature here that's been changed. And I think we're gonna look, and this is gonna be changed again, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is just for now, to get us, to get us clean for today, and then, I think by the, um, beginning of the next school year, we'll have a, another update, based on regulations coming down from the state. And then our last one is actually a new policy. Children, child nutrition program charging meals. So, I don't know if you wanna take it, if you had a chance to look at it? You all, all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the process here is this would be our first read, and since we have not seen any recommendations for changes, we would do our second read at our next board meeting, probably with no changes unless somebody had brought something up, and then they would be adopted at that time. Okay? So, do we want...
Questions?
Question, yeah.
May we have a motion to accept these four first readings?
So moved. Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
Okay, we'll move into our school liaison reports. Start with Sue, do you have anything?
Yes, Schlegel Road, um, all next week is their holiday shop, where all the kids have a chance to come in and secretly buy things for their family members. Um, winter concert is on Thursday, December fourteenth, and, um, the fifth graders have been ringing bells for the Red, Red Kettle Campaign. Isn't that nice? Yes.
Saw that on Twitter.
Yeah.
Yep. Linda?
Uh, Plank South, it was Poetry Day on Wednesday. It was awesome. I was only gonna stay for an hour, I think I stayed for every, 'cause I missed the kindergartners. It was incredible, kudos to them, they worked really hard. Um, their holiday shop is just finishing up as well. Next week, on the thirteenth, is their winter concert for fifth graders. Um, School Seventeen, they're wrapping the gifts, and they will, Santa will be going on December eighteenth to bring all the gifts, and their next meeting will be in January.
Thank you. Jan, anything?
Um, I went to the Clemworth PTSA meeting on November thirteen, and they were focusing on their upcoming events. They had a holiday hands event on the twenty-ninth, and they've been doing blankets and books and various other things. Uh, their next meeting is January eighth. Then I went for the first time to the State Road PTSA meeting, also on November twentieth. Um, great group of people, they're working on upcoming events. Um, in January, they're having a Nerf night. Um, I'm impressed with both groups of PTSA people that work so hard for the benefit of our kids, and great discussions about what would be some good school-wide assemblies that would benefit all the children, just really positive co- co- comments from everybody. One thing I encouraged both groups, I gave them the dates of the budget advisory meetings coming up, starting in February, um, and encouraged them, maybe someone would like to come, not, not necessarily to every meeting, but to come and be a part of it, even if you don't have something specific you wanna share, I think it's good to just get to know what's going on. So, um, I'm hopeful that some of us, some of those people will take us up on that. And their next meeting is January sixteenth.
Thank you. Bill, anything?
I met with the PTSA and Craig Bodensteiner at Plank North on November thirteenth. Craig spoke very passionately about how the great opening they had in September is continued. Kids are very excited about, uh, the announcements they do in the morning, and they're broadcasting them with a, an iPad that goes from room to room, and so each room gets to be a, a different central point for their broadcast. But there was a lot of excitement about the, uh, School Seventeen program, and the kids are apparently very excited about that, and quite a selection process to see who gets to go that day to help deliver the gifts, 'cause apparently that's quite a, quite a wonderful buzz you catch, so. Uh, our next meeting with Plank North will be on January eighth.
Thank you. That, um, Project Seventeen is really cool. I had, the, one time, I was a Santa. It was...
Scared all the kids there.
Yeah, yeah. Tammy?
Uh, at DeWitt's last meeting on the thirteenth, they talked about electronic report cards. Um, DeWitt gives back where they create crafts and host a night where all the things that they, all the crafts that are created are given to local organizations, dog treats for a dog or, you know, pet organization, and, um, great participation and feedback. Uh, I believe there's a holiday concert this evening, and the next meeting is on Monday, the eleventh. So I will be there.
At the last Clem South PTSA meeting, uh, they reported they had a very successful pie fundraiser. I gotta get in on that, 'cause I didn't get any pie. Um, on Thurs-...
Money!
There's a lot of people love pies, especially for Thanksgiving.
And don't wanna bake, yeah.
I mean, they're, they're very time-consuming.
And they're good.
Right.
Um, on Tuesday, December twelfth, they're gonna have their winter concert, but it's being at Schrader, it's at seven o'clock, and they're planning a literary night in January. Uh, tomorrow, at Willink, there's Donuts for Dads at seven o'clock in the morning, gonna be there?
I'm gonna be at the Chamber breakfast.
Oh, okay. You'd rather be at the Donuts for Dads. Uh, and there's a, a Central PTSA meeting at nine fifteen, I will be going, I don't know if anyone else, that's, that's all right. Monday, December eleventh, DeWitt PTSA, you're gonna, you're gonna catch it?
I will be there.
Tuesday, 7:30 in the morning, Schrader has a PTSA meeting. I can't make that. Can, Bill?
Say, can you repeat that again?
I'll try to go. Tuesday at 7:30.
7:30. And Thomas has a PTSA meeting the same day at 2:45. I can make that one, but if anybody else wants to...
Can I sign up for Schrader, Ray?
Well, you mean we can get you to sign up for more?
I just wanted to make sure I go to Schrader. I don't want to show up at none of the Donuts.
You can eat cookies.
All right, we're in fine shape. All right, let's go on to our Monroe County. Linda, do you want to report on the labor?
That was overwhelming, the difference between the New York State Paid Family Leave Act that will be starting in January and the family medical leave and how they tie together. So it was an hour, almost an hour and a half discussion about the difference, and it'll be fully implement, it's hoped to be fully implemented by the year 2021, where you'll be able to have 12 weeks of time off at 67%.
We're exempt.
We're exempt.
Yeah.
Okay. But you can opt in. There was this whole, I...
If you remember, we kept, with Dave sitting next to us, we kept saying...
Yes, we're not doing this, right? It was very, but, yes. And then it went on to, they also discussed surveillance, and how surveillance with microphones, and that's an invasion of privacy, so they went over all their rules.
Video's okay.
Video's okay.
But as soon as you add the audio, you're running into some legal problems.
Yes. So, yeah, that's good.
Yep. Interesting. Information exchange. Did we record it on that last time? Yes, we did.
No, we went to, it was the time change meeting.
Building resiliency?
It was at the four...
Oh, it was a nighttime meeting.
It was the four o'clock meeting.
Yeah. That was horrible. It just...
Four o'clock or the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
There was no pie.
The problem was, you didn't know how to be mindful.
That, I will be more prepared next time.
Pedal breathing, yes.
Yeah, it was, it didn't light my fire.
You'll find out.
So, it built on the ACES research? I think you guys have heard, perhaps? It was the very first time that these two particular speakers were speaking together, that they were doing their presentation together. So, lots of really cool information. It was just, it was, it was hard. I'm not sure if they will do another four o'clock meeting, or five o'clock, whatever time. No, it was a four o'clock.
It was funny, they changed to four o'clock because of a particular speaker, and that particular speaker did not show up.
Oh, wow.
Speaker was supposed to be coming from the U of R or something. All right, I'm going to do the legislative and executive together. On Monday, the Monroe County School Board Association took a delegation of about 25 people to Albany, and Brian and myself went, and we met with folks from SED, and the Governor's Education Staff, and the Assembly Ways and Means, and the Senate Finance, and both Minority Ways and Means Committee staff, and we pressed the point of foundation aid and tweaks to the tax cap, including elimination of the supermajority vote, and the flexibility to include the pilot growth and BOSI's capital projects in the tax cap formula. We also pointed out the need for mandate relief, once again, and we discussed how the federal budget could possibly affect local schools, particularly with the elimination of the state and local tax exemption. We also talked about the increase in English language learners and the lack of funding that, and the resources that is going with that, as well as our concerns about charter schools and tax vouchers. Brian can comment on this if he wishes, but I felt there was reasons for both optimism and pessimism in our visit. Traditionally, the budget proposals that come out of the Assembly are usually a little bit higher than the Governors', and traditionally, the proposals that come out of the Senate are lower than the Governors'. But there was talk about a deficit, and both Houses indicated that they really don't know what the Governor's going to do, and if the Governor's going to try to hold hostage something, like he has done in the past. And particularly from the Senate, I got the idea that the tax cap flexibility is not going to happen, because the Governor is really, that's his baby, and he's not going to move on that. And I don't know, Brian, if you've got any...
Yeah, no, you, there were mixed messages, I think, in some of the group sessions, it was, the sky was falling, the deficit. You know, I don't think people are really comprehending, perhaps, this entire state is driven by 12 blocks of Lower Manhattan, and Christmas bonus time is this month, so, you know, when personal income tax really comes through, you know, most of it comes out of this month. So I think a lot of those revenue shortfalls that the sky is falling are really not going to happen. But you got that, but then you had some other groups that we talked to were very, no, everything's going to be fine, we'll be on target for something similar to what happened last year. So it was an interesting dichotomy when we talked to different groups.
No questions on the Albany? All right. Last night, we met the Executive Committee. Carmen and I were there, actually, we sat at the table with, we met with County Executive Cheryl Denofol, and the Monroe County Health Director, Dr. Mendoza, to discuss partnering with schools in regard to the opioid crisis. Dr. Mendoza offered the following suggestions for schools. To raise your school's community awareness and to address the stigma of addiction and overdose, because he feels addiction is not a character flaw, it is a disease. He asked the schools to consider stocking Narcan, which is the medication that you use to block the effects of an opioid overdose, and I know that can be a controversial topic. He asked us to evaluate our district's support services and the counseling programs, and he strongly encourages us to sponsor information forums for the community. And I believe we're bringing Dr. Mendoza in the next couple of months to Webster for that.
So how is that partnering?
We, the county is offering their resources, like Dr. Mendoza...
Okay. To come in, come and speak to a public forum.
They're also, the Narcan was really cheap.
Narcan's free, at this point. You can go into any pharmacy at this point and get Narcan. It's, like I said, your co-pay is already paid for. So, he's basically saying, and he said that, like, every household, we should all be going, because you just never know when an overdose is going to happen. It could be a friend of a friend, it could be a, you know, the son or daughter of a friend that's visiting your house, and they go into an overdose. One of the things that he kept saying last night, which I really, I never saw it this way, he said that, you know, addiction is a chronic illness. Overdose is preventable, preventable. And he compared addiction to something like asthma. So, you know, when your kids have asthma, you can treat that asthma, you can keep it under control, but there are times where your child, when he's exercising or whatever it's going to be, goes into an asthmatic attack, and it can be life-threatening, and you have to get him to the, you have to get in the hospital right away. He says, "That's like an overdose." Your child will have asthma for years and years and years, maybe forever. That's the chronic illness. That's addiction. He basically said, "You never really get over addiction." You're just, you're either recovering, or you're not. But he said overdoses, that's the epidemic. We have an epidemic of overdosing right now, and those deaths are preventable. And it's, Narcan is one of the ways to prevent these deaths. Luckily...
Why haven't we brought it into our schools?
I think we, no, we have Narcan, we have Narcan in our schools now.
I was not aware of that.
Yes.
In all our schools?
In all, in all nursing, in all nurses' offices right now, we have Narcan.
Thank you very much.
Even at home, too?
Yep. Yeah, because, think about it, not that we're going to worry about an overdose for the fifth grader, but during parent nights, or during family nights, you know, you have a thousand adults in your building, and you just...
But there was just, there was just an arrest today with a child that overdosed on fentanyl, and I think it was an inadvertent attaining of what the parents had, so...
A 10-year-old, it was a 10-year-old that died.
There you go.
And a six-year-old was the witness.
Yeah. So, and it was a wonderful presentation last night. I'm happy that we're going to be able to bring Dr. Mendoza in as well.
So, have we had an incidence, or has any district nearby had that occur on the district campus?
I have not heard that from any of the superintendents. And we have definitely not had one here involving our students or adults. We haven't had an overdose on campus. I have a feeling it's a matter of time.
But, that being said, in the community, luckily, I was in a situation where an individual was having an overdose, was blue, I mean, they were not breathing, and I'd been trained in CPR, and I was able to do that until the EMTs came and were able to administer the Narcan. So, I mean, to think that Webster is immune is the wrong idea.
And when is hosting?
Right, they're hosting a...
The Narcan training coming up.
Oh, right.
Yes, that's coming up at the library.
You know, one of, one of the things I keep reading of the opioid crisis is that it often starts off, the precursor often is anxiety. And that's what I was sort of alluding to when I was talking to Erica, that the anxiety and then, which is real, and then you get a prescription to try to help you, and then from that, it leads to, and I was thinking, if we can just get low enough where we control some of the anxiety, maybe we can have a long-term effect.
One of the things that Erica talked about was her training for MBSR, mindfulness-based stress reduction. And it started at University of Rochester, and, a long time ago, but it was basically done around pain, and there are so many patients with so much pain, it was like, okay, how else can we treat this other than medication? This goes back to the 70s, but now it's incredibly powerful, what you can do with MBSR, with mindfulness-based stress reduction. It can absolutely cut your use of pain and narcotics by either completely, or at least by half, at least at something. So, that's why it's, again, it's going to be great to have somebody certified on our staff to be able to train other people, whether it's adults or kids.
And this also fits in with the report that Linda gave from the state convention going to the opioid and...
Yes.
All right, I also had the opportunity to attend a forum involving four of our Regents, and the Chancellor was there, and both of our Regents, Norwood and Brown, and they responded to research that was presented by four local professors from the University of Rochester and Nazareth. And they spoke about student motivation, they spoke about high stakes standardized testing, they talked about poverty, race, and trauma, and they talked about charter schools. All these professors provided information to the Regents against, they were against charter, they showed why charters don't work, they were showing why high-stakes standardized testing doesn't work. And the Regents then responded to that research. And it was very interesting, because I guess you have to be a politician to become a Regent. They responded in such a way that, I'm not sure I can tell you what they said.
All right.
You know, the research that came out were about the high-stakes standardized testing, and again, the professor said he has no problem with standardized testing, but as soon as you add the high stakes, that creates all sorts of problems. And the Regents basically said, "Well, we got to make sure it works for our students and it works for our teachers." So they really didn't say if they're against it or... And at the same time, all the research on the charter schools that this professor provided, they're just not doing what they said they would do, but yet, well, in this case, I'll defend the Regents, they can't control charter schools, this is the Governor.
Right.
And the Governor really is for charter schools. So it was really, really interesting. I would love to have that happen in Webster, bring those four professors in and just have them talk to the community. It was really, really interesting.
So we can all be confused?
No, I didn't say bring the Regents in.
It's the Regents.
The Regents, the Regents' response was...
He wants just the professors.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Our audit, you heard, we're doing an audit, actually, Brian and I and Carmen are meeting with the audit people next week. Policy we just had today at our budget meeting, I don't think you have anything to add to that, Sue? Budget advisor hasn't met yet, and anything on strategic planning?
No, they're just trying to schedule a meeting on the same day as their next policy meeting.
Oh, see, I was just going to ask you about that.
We got to, yeah, we got to address that.
Yeah.
And policy, it is a light year, so we could always move that, but I'll talk to Larry and come up with something.
Okay. That leads us to our consent agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to look at it. It includes the recommendations from the superintendent involving our personnel actions, our committee on special education, as well as our committee on preschool education, as well as some cooperative bids involving our electric supply and some lunch paper and various things of that nature. Right, that's, the next meeting is wrong. With that being said, are there any questions on the consent agenda? Then may we have a motion to accept it, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, on the agenda, it says our next meeting is January 4th, that has been changed to January 11th, and also, this is our last public meeting of the calendar year, so we wish everyone a happy holidays. And with that being said, may we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
In a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.